All right, so I'll start the meeting. So this is the Planning Board meeting of April 28th, 2020, and it's a little after seven o'clock. Okay, let me do a, just to see who's here. Wilson, clear?
Yeah.
Here. Jim Hoffman?
Yeah.
Jim Bogut?
Here.
And Bruce Mackey is here, and Kevin Robinson is not here as of yet. All right, so I guess I gotta read this pursuant to Governor Baker's much 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A, subsection 20, and the governor's much 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Cava Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend to me can be found on the Town of Cava website at www.cavamas.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so on the following manner: Area 58 livestream, www.Area58.tv. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of Cava website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceeds as soon as possible after the meeting. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by sending an email to planning@cavamas.gov. The public provide their full name and address with. All right, so we don't, we start with Jim first as we hand, I guess? Or did you want to do that, Jim? Or do we want to wait for Kevin?
Oh, for the, are you talking about the discussion with Jack Williams?
Yeah.
All right, and just, for everyone, is that we had this discussed at the April 14th meeting, and I was supposed to come back here for tonight's meeting, but it was inadvertently left off the agenda. So just make people aware of that. And then what part of the discussion was, is Jack is seeking a lot relief, lot release for Gilbert Estates, and a question came up to have either Fussin' O'Neal do the inspection, or could we go by town employees during the inspection of the subdivision? The board decided to proceed with Jack Williams, I mean with Fussin' O'Neal to do the inspection. In your packets they delivered this afternoon, you should have a copy of an inspection report on the subdivision prepared by Fussin' O'Neal, and so I just wanted to direct that to your attention.
Yeah. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Williams?
No, we met out there Friday, and I thought they made good time in getting us the report. And I agree with everything in the report.
Okay, so there's still some work to be done out there.
Yeah.
They said it was minor, but the, so how you doing with that?
Well, with the weather and everything else and all this baloney with the coronavirus, we haven't done much out there. I did, I have talked to the neighbor, as in the report here, that we'll put up that hedge across the street probably in the fall, when we get nice growing season, and we don't kill all the plants that are going to be planted in there. There are some, we will put the drainage bags in the catch basins so that they don't keep silting up. There's a little bit of silt in the bottom of right now, we'll clean those out, and then proceed with the rest of the work.
Okay, so yeah, what Andy did say was, that based on the observations at the site, and subject to satisfactory completion of the above items, we believe that the work is being completed according to the approved plans and special permit conditions. Cleaning the sumps and installing inlet protection on catch basins is the most time-sensitive item, and is recommended that the Planning Board get a commitment from Williams Brothers, Inc. to complete this work as a condition of releasing lots for development. Otherwise, action items, action items list above are minor in nature and are in, or in progress of being resolved or constructed. Therefore, we recommend that the Planning Board allow Williams Brothers, Inc. to continue with development of the subdivision. So, so what's with cleaning the sumps and installing inlet protection on the catch basin? Is that, how long is that going to take to complete? Well, you don't really know because of what's going on with the coronavirus.
Well, that's, that's the biggest issue right now. I mean, cleaning the sumps would not be a big deal.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Will.
Thanks, Bruce. The items that are listed here from Fussin', Fussin' O'Neal seem to be minor in nature. We're gonna hold two lots. Those two lots, we had valued for well over $300,000 and some thousand dollars. Obviously, before he can get any occupancies or anything like that, he's gonna have to do these minor things, and they're probably gonna have to have a maintenance during the construction throughout this project. The only concern that I had, Jack, was, I don't know if you have the same memo from Fussin' O'Neal?
I believe I do. It stated April 24th.
Yes, sir. They said that on, on, I want to say photo number six, that they're suggesting on moving that drainage, drainage basin, drainage catch basin?
One TV, too.
No, it's, it's a manhole.
Right.
They're not talking about moving the basin. They're talking about, there's a manhole in, in that red dotted area?
Yes, sir.
That needs to, that will need to be brought to the surface, but not at this time.
Gotcha. And then the other, the only other thing was the viewing ports on the Leachon Field and the gas, gas traps?
Yes.
And that's something that's in progress?
Um, I think they're, they're all in except for one is, that's, that we didn't have there, and they didn't seem to think it was a big deal. I mean, we can do that, we can do that while, during construction, you know, over the next month or so.
I gotcha. I still think we have way more than enough money to ensure that this happens, and he wouldn't get any occupancies until, you know, a substantial amount of work is maintained and completed anyway. So I think we're in good shape, Mr. Chair.
I think so, too. So, I'll entertain a motion. Does anybody, is any of the other Planning Board members have any questions or comments? Anything else to say?
Well, I guess just to follow up with Fussin' O'Neal, do we have a quoting from them, commitment from Williams Brothers to complete this work in any sort of timely manner? As long as there's a commitment that will be adhered to, then I don't see a problem.
Let's say the next 60 days will be my commitment.
There's a commitment. Great.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. Okay, so we'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, for clarification, our previous motion was to approve the lot release as long as we had Fussin' O'Neal's report. So I think the motion and everything still carries. If Jim, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct. So it was a, the condition was to have Fussin' O'Neal inspect, and I'm just trying to remember, I don't recall the full motion, but it's release, I believe, eight of the lots while holding two of them. And I think Jack can refresh us as to which lots he was looking for. And so that was the motion, and so Fussin' O'Neal's gone out, they've inspected, and Jack is committed to have those outstanding items taken care of within the next 60 days.
Okay.
That's correct. And the lots that I think you were, were planning on having you hold, the lots seven and eight?
Yes. So I think we're all set, right?
Okay, so that's the motion?
Well, it's, it's not a motion. We already did a motion and an approved vote on this. We were just waiting on the report from Fussin' O'Neal.
Oh, okay. Yeah, gee, I'd forgotten about that.
Well, the last motion was to rescind.
Right.
So the previous?
Oh, I got you.
Stance, Jim.
Okay.
The previous vote, I should say.
So what you're saying, there was a motion and a second, and we voted on it?
Yeah, like two meetings ago, we did a motion to approve the lot release.
Okay.
With it, with the, the only condition was getting the report from Fussin' O'Neal, and that was approved by the board in that motion. And we were just waiting for this report, that's all. I don't think, I don't think we need another motion to do the exact same thing we already did.
Okay, so, so we're all set. So, and there was $6,966.80 in the, in the inspection fund, so.
Can you repeat that number again? Sorry.
So this was plenty of money in the fund to cover Fussin' O'Neal's charges.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, while Will was saying, the meeting that he was referring to was on February 25th?
No.
So Suzanne, I don't know if you have to put that in the notes?
Actually, I think it was April, wasn't it last, last, was it, was it April 14th? No.
No, it was one before it.
I'm just saying, because on that, I'm looking at the notes from, the notes that we're gonna approve later today, later tonight.
Right.
Our previous voter releasing the launch on meeting of 2/25.
Okay.
Now, eight lots released, holding lots seven and eight upon approval from Fussin' O'Neal.
Okay.
I think that's the one that we're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jim, I just, I just found that, and that's true. It's on the, it's from the February 25th meeting.
Okay.
And, right, so the motion to release lots one through six, nine and 10 on Gilbert Estates, withholding lots seven and eight upon approval from Fussin' O'Neal, and it was a 5-0 unanimous vote.
Perfect.
All right, so I guess you're all set, then?
Great, thank you. Jim, I think you have the, the covenant release. Did I send that to you?
I believe so, yep.
Okay, so can we coordinate that for signatures and getting it to me and?
Right, so, yeah, we'll work on getting that. That's, unfortunately, it's on the office computer, so I have to get back to the office to get that.
Okay, great. We'll, we'll be in contact.
All right, and are you staying in for the later public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just mute you then.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
Thank you, thank you to the board.
All right, we are on TV now, so, so I guess we'll go to the A and Rs. And the first A and R was 19 South Main Street, Timothy Bradshaw, that's map 87, Lot 2. And so this is for discussion and possible vote. And we've had these for, since last Wednesday, right? So I would think that everybody has time to look at these, in the sense they were delivered right to our house.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just so you know, we have representatives from Outback Engineering with us for the meeting. I believe, I can't remember, it's either Jason Youngquist or Paul Babino.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Hi, who's this on, from?
Yeah, this is, this is Paul from Outback.
Hi, Paul, how you doing?
I'm doing great, thanks. I apologize for being late. I, my computer didn't seem to work, so I'm on my cellphone, and I'm not quite, I've never done this on my cellphone before. But as long as you can hear me, I.
Sure. Did you want to, through the chair?
Yes.
Just go ahead, Jim. Uh, just give a little presentation of what you're trying to do with 19 South Main Street?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's just the, we're just creating four new lots, you know, three conventional, conventional zonings and one of the back lots. They have all the, you know, they have the frontage and they have the area, so I believe it's, you know, just a straightforward format. If anybody has any questions, you know, hopefully I can answer them.
I believe I talked to Jason regarding lot number three appears to be, fall under the real lot provision?
Right, right, yeah. He mentioned that we just need to prove that the, the lot hasn't been subdivided since 1998. And I could certainly forward, the lot was created in 1980, I believe, so I can certainly forward you that A and R plan, you know, to prove that it was created in 1980.
That's, that's for the, the four lots that are shown on the plan?
Yeah, the, the total of the, the, the whole parcel was created in, yeah, 1980.
Okay, and then if you could send that to me electronically, because our building commissioner has to kind of review that, and so he's working remotely these days, so if you send that information to me, then I can send it to him just to take a look at.
Sure, sure, and he's the one who ultimately has to, you know, grant the building permit, so I can certainly get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so it seems like all these lots, except for that real lot, all the lots have the correct lot area, lot frontage, and everything, and then the real lot meets all the real lot requirements?
Uh, yes, they do.
Does, does, does anybody, does any of the Planning Board members have anything to, any questions to ask?
Turn that down, please?
No, I needed to hear that.
Well, I was asking, are you dividing this to build new houses on it?
Excuse me?
Are you dividing this so you can build a, a house on each four of those lots?
Uh, I'm not building houses, I'm just subdividing it, but I do believe that they will be building four houses on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So the only question that I had was for clarification. On lot number three, we need to get verification that the, that the lot that is being subdivided, that's created in Lot 3, was, was created prior to that date, correct, Jim?
Uh, that's my understanding.
All right, so if that's the case, how can we approve this? Because you can't condition an A and R.
Right, unless you wanted to wait till we get the information, and then we can carry it to the next Planning Board meeting.
I, I don't think we have a choice, because we need that clarification prior to approval, and you can't condition an A and R. So I don't see any way that we can move on this A and R without that clarification being certified.
And what kind of certification? Just, just, just the, okay on the building commissioner?
Yeah, the building commission asked to see verification that this was, the, the said lot that is now being subdivided into four lots was subdivided prior to, I forget what the date is off the top of my squash, but, and then to be able to approve it. There's no reason why we wouldn't be able to approve it as long as that that is, but the way it is now, we can't, we can't condition an A and R.
Well, the building inspector has a final, he has to, you know, issue the building permit. And like I said, the slot was created in 1980, which is.
Yeah, you, and all I need is something from my building commissioner verifying that you gave them that information, and it's correct.
Understandable.
So, would it be all right if we just tabled this for tonight, and we take this up at our next meeting with the information that we need for the real lot? Two weeks gonna hold you up?
Oh, no, no, what is it? Next meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's before the 21 days, right?
Uh, it'll be 14 days from, I don't know, when these plans were first submitted to Town Hall.
Well, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just, we'll table it for two weeks. We'll do, we'll be back in two weeks.
Okay, as long as you can get that information to Jim, or send a copy of that plan, and so that Jim Walsh and the building inspector can see that, then we can just, we'll approve this plan at our next meeting.
You guys will, you guys will have it tomorrow.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
No, thank you, guys.
And just for information for the gentleman from Outback, section 2344 provides the date. It's May 8th, 19.
Oh, I know, yeah, I am well aware of it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, so the next we have is Three Pokes Point Road, Justin Maris. Map 77, Lot 4. This is for a discussion and possible vote. And, and I just want to add that Jim and I, last week, we looked at all these plans, went over, just to make sure that they, they were within all the zoning, you know, had the correct frontage and square footage and everything. So while these plans are pretty good, the only one we had the question on was just the one that we just looked at, and figured we needed that information. So, but these other ones seem to be pretty straightforward. So is there anyone here to represent Three Pokes Point Road?
We have Bob Rogers here from GAF Engineering.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bob Rogers. So this is a, is a Form A plan, as you say, that has more than the minimum amount of frontage and area. It creates only one, one new building lot, which is a over three acre building lot. The remaining land is over six acres. It's a very recent survey, and it's a recent wetland delineation. So there's, it's about as, about as good as it gets, I guess, for an A and R plan.
Yeah, I see you meet all the requirements. Anybody else have any, anybody have any questions about this?
Well, I guess my question would be is, why, why are you doing this? You know?
It would be for one new single-family house on Lot 4B.
And then the bottom says the Carver Middleborough Town Line is shown incorrectly on this plan.
I'm sorry?
The plan that I have in front of me down at Plan References at the bottom, it says the Carver Middleborough Town Line is shown incorrectly on this plan. I'm wondering what's incorrect about it.
This is a note you're looking at on our plan?
Yeah, down, down here at the.
The Plan References? Yes, okay, I see that, yeah.
What's incorrect about it?
So that's, so that's referring to the 1981 plan. So what we're saying is there's a difference between our, our plan and the 1981 plan, and so we're asserting, which is the right of our surveyor, Mr. Berman, that, that the reference plan was incorrect to the town line. We're showing the town line, we're showing bounds, we're showing mathematical information, and so that's, that's a point of information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank, you're welcome.
Okay, I'll, if there aren't any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to endorse the plan, the Form A that we have in front of us for Pope's Point Road.
You have a second? Okay, so Jim seconded. Okay, so I'll give a roll call vote. Wilson, clear?
Aye.
Jim Hoffman?
Aye.
Jim Bogut?
Aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye, and Kevin Robinson is not with us. All right. All right, so that's that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
So the next is 73 Rochester Road. It's JLK Realty Trust, map 27, Lot 96, and this is for a discussion and possible vote also. And is, see, Jim and I also looked at this, this particular one. It seemed to be good from every, everything that we could see. If, is there anyone online with us here?
John Romanelli and Jamie Bissonette?
Good evening.
Good evening.
If, if it's all right, I'd like to put the plan up on your screen.
Sure.
Cool. All right. Um, so what we, what we have in front of you tonight is an A and R plan to create a total of three lots. Presently, there's a single-family house with a garage building on one larger lot. We're looking to create two new lots, both for residential dwellings. We've had the wetlands delineated to the rear and located, and we've done a full boundary survey, and, and you have the plan in front of you, and so we're looking for approval from the Planning Board tonight on the, on the A and R plan.
All right, any, like I said, I think Jim and I looked at this, and we were okay. Any of the Planning Board members have any questions?
So, Mr. Chair, through you to the applicant, so you're, you're creating Lot 1 and Lot 3?
That's correct.
Right now, the Lot 2 is all of it, correct?
That is correct, yep.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else by any of the Planning Board members?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to endorse the Form A for Rochester Road as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Will, a second by Jim Hoffman. So let me do the roll call vote. Wilson, clear?
Aye.
Jim Hoffman?
Aye.
Jim Bogut?
Aye.
And Bruce Mackey, aye, and Kevin Robinson still is not with us, so. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. So next, we have another A and R. It's RVW Realty Home Street, which is map 72, lots 3-1 and 3-2, and this is for another discussion and possible vote. So is, who's here tonight to represent this plan?
Stephen Kotowski from Webby Engineering. I don't see him. I don't see him on.
Do you want to see? I mean, we could table this to the next meeting, or do you want to approve this thing, or you want to take a look at it?
When did we receive it, Bruce?
When do we get this, Jim?
It was originally presented to us about a month ago. It was originally presented to us about a month ago by asking them to clarify what they were doing on the plan. So it'd be easier for I believe it was about two weeks ago where they resubmitted the plan to us.
Jim, maybe you can, maybe you can talk to us on what they're trying to do here, what they're trying to, what lots are trying to create.
All right. So they have two lots. There's Lot three dash one and three dash two. They're taking pieces of three dash one, splitting it off to create Lot one, as well as taking a portion of Lot three dash two and create another piece for Lot, Lot one. So if you look at Lot one, you can see where the dash lines are. Get a, a dash line on the, on the plan and that. So the, the piece to the right is Lot, was from Lot three dash two. And then the piece from the left, so that's going to be, so what it's going to do is combines those two pieces into Lot one. And then three dash one will just be the cranberry bog. And there's an existing structure on, on three dash Lot one, I should say.
The Lot one's gonna, is being created?
And Lot one is being created.
Where's it getting its frontage?
It's got two hundred and twenty-two frontage on Home Street.
See, Lot one is, is going to, is part of the lot that has the building, existing building on it, Will.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
Yeah, this was a little complicated, but it, it shows Lot one and then it shows some dash lines. I guess that was originally the lot. And so now they're combining it with the house and that lot in the back. So it has the correct amount of frontage and it has enough square footage. And then rest is going to be cranberry bogs.
Just for general conversation, do we know why they're doing that, creating that odd shaped lot? Do they plan on moving the house back there? Or they just, I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, it meets the requirements of Form A.
Yeah, we don't know. It wasn't explained. I don't know if it says anything on the plan. Says the purpose of this plan is to divide parcel A from Lot three dash two and parcel B from Lot three dash one and combine them to create Lot one.
Yeah, it meets the requirements.
It meets the requirements. It looks like they're just trying to separate the bogs onto their own parcels. But it does meet the requirements.
I'm good.
I guess I got a question on the, where it says parcel A and then parcel B. Where does the existing building fall in that parcel B? So trying to follow that dotted line?
Yeah, so the existing building was part of Lot three dash one. And so they carved off the existing building piece from the cranberry bog piece. You see where it says existing paved driveway?
Okay, yep.
All right. And then you see that property boundary there? So if you erase that property boundary, the existing boundary was part of that Lot three dash one, which shows the cranberry bog there.
So it looks like the building was part of the cranberry bog area. And then there's a dashed lot. It says parcel B. And then there's a dashed lot. It says parcel, parcel, parcel A. So what they're doing is they're, they're combining, combining parcel A and parcel B. And then to the right of the, of that building, they're putting in a property line to divide the bogs off. So they're, they're combining a bunch of small lots, it looks like. And then to make, to make, to give frontage and to give the square footage for the building. And then they're putting the line between the building and the cranberry bog to give that cranberry bog just to close it as, as a lot in itself. It is a bit confusing, that's for sure. Because it looks like those dash lines. Oh, wait a minute. Those are offset lines. Yeah, I could be wrong there. Some of those dash lines were lots. So but the lots meet the requirements anyway. And what was your question again, Jim?
I'm just trying to follow, follow what the new Lot one, what, what it's going to include. So it's where it says Lot one.
Lot one is going to be the, the piece in the back.
Yep.
Plus the piece with the building on it. That's Lot one. The solid lines go designate the, the property lines. And the dashed lines with the meets and, and bounds on it are bearings and distances. That looks like it was the one, an, an old lot. So they're just combining that.
Okay, so where it says parcel A, parcel B, plus the house will become the new Lot one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if everybody's good with this.
Make a motion to endorse the Form A for F V W Realty Trust as presented.
All right. Second.
I'll second that.
So Jim, get the second. So do a roll call vote. Wilson, clear.
Aye.
Jim Hoffman.
Aye.
Jen Bogut.
Aye.
And Bruce Mackey, aye. And Kevin Robinson isn't with us. All right. So that goes, so now we we go on to continued pub, public hearing. And this is on the application of our P B, our B P B LLC of Kingston requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two thirty and thirty-one hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located off of Spring Street on assesses map thirty-two, lots five dash E, six dash A, six dash B N, six dash C N, and six dash D N in Carver. And the applicant proposes the construction of approximate seventy-four hundred square foot commercial building with associated parking and utilities. Do we have the, the applicant and the engineers with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group. With me is Eric Schumacher from our firm and Peter Opachinsky, the applicant. And just before we review the plan modifications that were made pursuant to the Fussin O'Neil peer review, I'd like to just refresh the board's memory on the permitting history. This parcel, you may recall, this, this lot was independent of the definitive subdivision that was approved in two thousand and nineteen. The wetland resources were approved as part of an ORAD in two thousand and eighteen. The Form A plan for this lot was approved last year as well, around the same time as the definitive subdivision plan. We, we opened the hearing on February twenty-fifth with the planning board. And it was continued, obviously. And the, two weeks later, we had a meeting with the Conservation Commission. They closed the public hearing and voted to issue an order of conditions. That was March fourth. And the very next day, on March fifth, there was a planning board site walk. And most of you had an opportunity to walk the property, the frontage, and having gained an understanding regarding the, the location and the buffers to existing properties, as well as the, the subdivision, the current earthwork operation that's progressing as we speak. Right now, the tension, the subsurface infiltration system is under construction, which is to the rear of this lot within an easement that was permitted as part of the definitive subdivision. And this lot was designed to, or it was designed to accommodate the surface runoff from this lot. So basically, we recently resubmitted a letter and some minor plan modifications on April sixteenth submitted to the planning board. And Fussin O'Neil has reviewed our submission and issued a memo on April twenty-fourth, which essentially indicates that we've addressed all of their concerns. And if you'd like, we can run through some of the plan modifications that were made pursuant to that review.
Sure, go ahead, please.
Okay, Eric, could you please put the plans up? Would you allow Eric to share his screen so he could?
I think he has a capability.
Walk through the plans?
Yeah. All right. I'm on remote desktop here, so you'll be able to see my whole desktop. So I'm going to go through basically our response to comments to Fussin O'Neil on our April sixteenth letter.
Eric, we can't see the plan.
All right. There we go. You still see it?
We can see it now. Yep.
All right. So we'll, we'll start in our letter down at bullet three. So section thirty-one sixty-four of the zoning bylaw states to minimize visibility of parking areas from public ways or residential uses and to provide screening of the lot from the roadway and perimeter or request a waiver with technical justification. So since our last submission, the landscaping plan has been revised and we included intensive landscaping along the perimeter of the site at request of the planning board. So with those revised landscaping plans, I mean, as the sec, this section of the zoning bylaw recommends, we, we do minimize visual intrusion of the site by controlling visibility to the parking area. Along the frontage, we provided red maple trees, fountain, fountain grass, shrubs, and multiple honey locusts. We'll move on to comment four. Include proposed lighting fixture mounting heights on the plans. The maximum mounting height shall be fifteen feet. So we revised our comment down here. I'll call out to the, the lighting fixtures, basically to just have that fifteen foot restriction on it.
Lighting fixtures that are attached to the building?
The wall pack lightings, yes.
Wall pack, okay. And do we have a plan showing the distribution of, of light on, to the parking lot from those?
A photometric plan?
Yeah.
We, we included technical specifications. I don't believe we, we had a photometric plan submitted with these plan revisions.
Okay.
Comment number six, or five, so section thirty-two forty-one, based on the number of parking spaces in the parking lot, additional landscape islands are required or request a waiver with technical justification. Let me pull up this. So in, in our letter, I, I go through the whole calculation. Basically, we're providing a lance, three landscape islands during this submission. There is one over here separating the five parking spaces from the, the dumpster pad. And then there's two landscape islands on the perimeter of the parking in front of the building. Now, based on our, our parking calculations and the area that we're proposing, we're required to have four hundred and fifty-three square feet of those landscape islands. So this submission is now providing five hundred and twenty. So we're, we're in excess of that requirement. Comment number six. Section thirty-two forty-two, based on the number of proposed spaces in the parking lot, a seventeen foot landscape buffer is required. The proposed buffer along Spring Street is approximately four feet wide, and the buffer along Road A ranges in nine to nineteen feet. Given the residential zone adjacent to the site, the proposed landscape buffers are inadequate to provide screening, particularly along Spring Street. Provide parking lot perimeter landscaping in accordance with the section. So our revised plans, let me pull up the landscaping plan here. So our, our plans have been revised to have sixteen parking spaces. Therefore, according to this section of the bylaw, we, we need a sixteen foot perimeter buffer. So I included a waiver in our, our latest plan set for this section of the bylaw. But I would, I would like to explain just the constraints that we're designing around for this site. So in, in order to kind of follow the design of, of this landscape buffer in the front of the site, we were constrained by the drainage basin that has, was previously, previously approved by the board. So this drainage easement is set in stone. That can't be moved. So with that, we, we designed the back loading space behind the building. This is forty-three feet wide and we, we did an auto turn analysis. So our client plans to use box trucks back there to access the loading docks and then leave the site. So that, that was designed at, at the minimum, the forty-three feet needed for a box truck. So with that, and then the width we need for a two-way driving aisle and parking in front of the building, that, that was the technical justification we provided for our landscape perimeter buffer. Now, we, we exceed the requirement on the eastern side of the parking and on the western side adjacent to Road A, the range of landscape buffers it ranges from nine and nineteen feet, as stated in the memo. And with this additional screening that we're providing between deciduous trees, pine trees, shrubs, and, I mean, hydrangeas, we, we think we've provided good perimeter buffer. It should also be noted that during the, the sidewalk with the planning board, they didn't have any issues with our limit of pavement. I, I took them to all points, the limit of pavement during, basically the corners of it. And that's a conclusion made from there. The perimeter landscaping in the front, we agreed, would extend to the sidewalk. So that would be beyond the property line, six and a half feet. Nothing's changed on that end. So moving on to comments seven. Straightforward, section thirty-two sixty, landscape buffers shall include native grass, shrubs, and trees. The proposed landscape The proposed landscape buffer plantings do not include shrubs and consist primarily of deciduous trees. Um, et cetera, uh, landscaping plans have been revised and we're showing shrubs and um. Meeting the requirement of thirty-two sixty. Other than that, uh, this, the review letter, um, just basically notes previous comments and uh. We, we think on our end, we've addressed everything that um, has come from Fussin O'Neil review. Uh, can answer any questions anyone has related to this?
Before we go on to that, I, I probably should have said this in the beginning, and thank you for your presentation. Um, uh, Jen and I did do, uh, I, Jen and I and Jim Walsh. Went out there and I don't know if any of the other planning board members uh, did go out to the site, but uh. I know that Jen and I and Jim Walsh uh, did look uh, where the pavement was going. Uh, the corners of the pavement of the parking lot were marked out, the corners of the buildings, uh, of, of the building was marked out. Uh, so we had a chance to uh, to view that. Um, we uh, we looked off uh, to the right as you face the front of the building to the pilot property. And um, I'm not gonna put words in, uh, I'll let Jen speak uh, about what she saw out there, but. Um, we looked and, and it was uh, heavily wooded and I couldn't see a house. Uh, to the right, uh, looking towards uh, Ricketts Pond, I, I couldn't see anything from that. Lot, from that lot. And I think what uh, Jen and I were most concerned with, and I see, it seems like you've addressed it very well. Is uh, the landscaping, uh. We thought that, uh, you know, have additional landscaping in the front, along the left side of the entrance. And um, we were also concerned about the, the right side. And I see that uh, there's some uh, landscaping, uh, there's some trees that, that have been added. Uh, off the parking lot at the right front corner there, uh, up to the, or set the uh. Hundred-foot wetland buffer. So. So that, so we were, uh, so I was pleased to see that. So what, what else, I don't know if it has, did any of the other planning board members get a chance to, to walk out there, or was it just Jen and I?
I didn't get a chance.
Okay, so I guess it was just Jen and I that, that went out and took a look at this. Now, you know, what I was gonna say tonight is that, of course, we're just concerned with this Form A lot, this is what's being presented tonight. I've had uh, a couple of the abudders ask um, questions. And, and I think I, I sent those uh, questions out. Um, of, some of them were, were. Asked about the subdivision and as we know, the subdivision has already been approved, so. There's nothing that can be changed in the subdivision, um, some of the questions were asked about uh, the protection of Ricketts Pond. And of course, that's not the planning board's uh, cup of tea, it's, it's, it's up to the Conservation Commission. And, and, and you people already have plans that were approved by the Conservation Commission. And also was looked at by the state, so all, all that has already been approved, so we're just looking at. Tonight, this lot, uh, this uh, Form A lot, that's all. Um, I don't know, does, before I. I ask any questions, have they, any of the planning board members have any questions?
Well, I'll jump in and I guess I'll agree with a lot of what you said, Bruce, about our.
Yeah, I could have let you talk next, yeah, okay, great.
It's all good, um, I agree with a lot of what you said and um, yeah, the landscaping out front, especially along Spring Street. In my opinion, is extremely important because that is a gateway kind of into a residential area and. Out to the highway, so that was something I really tried to get across that, that I think it should be great and. While I appreciate um, what's being proposed. It's, the stuff proposed along Road A seems so much more. Complex and complete and visually interesting compared to. What's being proposed on Spring Street to uh, to bring up the Fussin O'Neil memo, those red maples are deciduous. And then, I'm not an arborist, but I tried to look into the plants referenced and it looks like that dwarf fountain grass isn't beautiful in the winter. So um, so I'm concerned about the screening on Spring Street. Like I said, I'm, I'm not a landscape architect, but based on what I'm seeing off of Road A, I feel like it could be improved to uh, better fit the rural character of town. And provide better uh, better screening. I know it's a narrow space, like we said, but. In my opinion, I think it shouldn't look quite so differently than the screening off of Road A.
So what are you asking, if, if there was a reason why?
Well, no, I think what.
Less screening in the front than there is on the side?
Well, more so what can be done to, to even that out or add more screening along Spring Street that is going to. Look full and appealing year round.
I can, I can uh, comment on that, I think that. The parking lot is obviously close to the property line and there's a sidewalk. Um, that's right between the, the property line and the, and the edge of pavement, cornage of pavement, the vertical granite curb. Um, because cars will have to stop before they get to the side sidewalk, there'll be a stop sign and a stop bar there. The concern would be a sight distance, so we, we didn't want to plant uh, coniferous trees. Along the frontage, along that property line that would obscure the sight distance, looking in both directions. Uh, that's a concern, so the design incorporated deciduous trees and some lower shrubs. And, and kind of groups along the property line there, um, I suppose we could add. As long as it didn't affect the sight lines, we could add some more coniferous trees. Um, maybe the front right corner of the parking lot facing, facing that area, again, if it didn't affect. In a manner that would not impede the sight, sight lines there. Um, certainly could look at that, you could condition that, uh, if you were, if you decided to close the. Or make a decision tonight, we'd be, we'd certainly amenable to adding some, some plantings in that location, but I wouldn't wanna add anything. I guess. I guess facing the site, I wouldn't wanna add anything along that line, all the way over to Road, the Road A intersection, because you actually would, you would. You would impact the sight lines for both intersections, a car leaving both. Both the, the Form A lot, Road A subdivision road, you would impact the sight lines for both.
Yeah, no, I don't wanna impact sight lines, I just, I would imagine that something else could be done. To make it more similar to Road A or to change the things again, so it's, so it's beautiful on a year-round basis. So maybe, I, I would appreciate that to be looked at a little more.
Are we saying, what, which particular planting are we, are we saying?
I mean, on, anything along Spring Street, when I look at that, I see, you know. Five red maples and a lot of that dwarf fountain grass, but. I- in my opinion, I. I don't think that's the best thing for that neighborhood year round.
Is the fountain, isn't the fountain grass, is that not year round?
I, I, what I looked up, it doesn't look nice year round, it says it's not hardy in the winter and it doesn't hold on to its seeds. Just something that would still be attractive and full come winter time.
Maybe more of a juniper or something that would, that would be fuller or greener in the winter?
Yeah, I, I couldn't speculate right now, because again, I'm not a landscape architect, but. I, I think there's opportunity to make it more attractive for, for the business and for the neighboring. Houses.
Understood.
While maintaining sight lines and achieving everything else.
Eric, can you share photos of those plantings and kind of walk through, we have photos of those?
Landscaping photos, um.
There's the juniper.
Yeah, this is this sea green juniper, um, that's the seagrass you're referring to, correct?
This.
Well, no, the one up front is the camel and dwarf fountain grass, that's the one proposed on Spring Street.
That's.
Yeah, that one. It's just that and the red maples proposed along Spring Street and I just. I'd like to see something more, because Road A just seems like it would be a lot more attractive.
Would you like us to mix, the junipers, I think, are only called out on the Road A side? Should we mix some of those along the frontage with the, the fountain grass?
If it can, if it can mesh well and they can cohabitate together. Yeah, like, and I, I think the hydrangeas are great, I know they probably don't bloom all year, but just to have more color out there too, in the.
Top one, Eric.
Yeah. I think this is a great start and I think it can be close, I just feel like it can be improved upon a little more to really. Really enhance that neighborhood, you're coming on and off Spring Street, you live there, you don't, it, it can really make that place look great. And it is such a change for the people who live there to turn on the street and they'll see this building, so let's have it be a nice. Entrance to the entire industrial park.
Okay, so, so look, mix in some shrubs. That we can keep at a height that's under thirty inches or three and a half feet, the driver's eye height. And maintain them at that height. I think. Yeah, it looks like right now, the plan has these, um, it's pretty consistent along the front with the, the. The uh, the seagrass, right? And that's all that we're proposing at this point. So we could, we could mix in some junipers or some other um. Hardier shrubs.
Yeah.
It sounds good, yeah.
Yeah, something, I wish Kevin was here, he's the landscape guy, he's helped out with that before. I, I wish he was here, but yeah, I mean, small arborvitae, something, something out there that would, would add a little more visual interest and. And look great year round. That's my only comment.
Yeah, just our, our varieties again, they grow to a taller height, some more like a, a shrub, coniferous shrub.
Alright, anybody else have any other questions or concerns?
It was just a point of clarification on the photometrics that we will, um, that there was a question about. Um, in the plan set that was provided to me tonight, you guys have a uh, the photos of the. Buildings that are on um.
There you go.
That's the Marion, Marion Way, which is uh, uh, the Bazantiano uh, properties. Those type of fixtures do not give off that much light, um, you guys ever gone up that way, you can see at nighttime. All the light pretty much stays right on site, it doesn't go that far out, it barely covers the full length of the parking lots. That come off the building, so that's just a point of clarification for the members.
Hey, thank you for that, Will.
Yep.
I, I was wondering, uh, before I, I go out uh, with some questions that I have, but uh. Is the dumpster enclosed on the property or is that gonna be just in an open? I saw there was a dumpster pad to the left and rear of the parking lot. And is that enclosed with the fence?
It's visually screened with landscaping, um, we're not proposing fence around it uh, at this moment.
I don't know how the uh, other members of the board feel about that, but I just thought I'd bring that out, um, a snow removal. Where, where do you plan on bringing the snow?
Well, there's, there's actually a lot of, a lot of area. Around the perimeter of the lot where we had to grade down to reconcile with existing elevations. There's, there's a lot of area available on the, the right side of that lot for snow. See the slopes, the three, three to one slopes. We have area there, um, and then um. You know, you probably have, there's, there's some area. We have, there's so much landscaping now on the left side, there's no room for snow.
Right, yeah, that would be a good place for the snow, yeah.
But uh, there, there's plenty, there's plenty of room over there, this, to the right side where there's no landscaping, because you have such a, an existing. Wooded, mature wooded buffer between the pond and the edge of pavement, so there's a lot of, lot of area over there.
Alright, um. If nobody else has any other questions, I, I do have some questions from the public, there was two, two ladies. Uh, two abudders that uh, I gave my plans to because. Um, I felt that they couldn't view them at the town hall, since the town hall isn't open, we haven't had, the, I don't think the plans were online. So um, I did have some questions here, uh, before I go on to that, there was also a comment from before from the abudders about putting the. The driveway to the building instead of in front of the building off of Spring Street to bring it in on the left-hand side. But I, when I was there doing a, a walk, a site visit. There was a lot of traffic and a lot of big trucks going through that road, uh, you know, hauling material in and out. So I thought that, that would. Be tough to get in and out of that building with all the trucks going in and out. That was just my thought, um, also. I went around town today and I went to Marion Way and Commerce Way and I went to South uh, Carver. And there was a question about the size of the building and I noticed that all the buildings were five bays, exactly. But, but one that, that you have proposed on this site now, I just thought I'd, I'd bring that out. That all the buildings are, are like this throughout town on projects that we have approved and um. And I've also, uh, there's a new project that's coming in that we're gonna. Look at tonight after this, and that's also the same size of building, so. I just thought I'd bring that out. I do have, I do have some questions from Mary McGrath on Two-Solar Circle. And one of them was, and, and this was a good question, it was, will truck, will trucks exit, exiting the. Property still be required to turn right towards Route forty-four, thus minimizing truck traffic in the neighborhood? Is there. Lodge trucks that are gonna be going out of this uh, building or is it just uh. Pickup trucks and, and just personal vehicles?
I would, I would say pickup trucks and personal vehicles, you know, the building is, is, Peter, are you still with us?
No, I'm still here.
Uh, Peter could probably comment or elaborate on this, but it's really more of a tradesman. Uh, the use is, is really for, you know, the tradespeople. Uh, so there'd be no, no lodge trucks, lodge trucks can't even negotiate the site, really, the, the site was designed. The rear of the site was designed and, and there's a plan that is included in the plan set that shows the turning movements for a box truck. So really, that's the largest vehicle that would negotiate the site.
Yeah, I would expect that most of the vehicles coming and going from this building would be going out to the highway anyway. I mean, I would say that probably seventy, eighty percent or more of the vehicles would be using the highway, am I wrong or?
No, I, I, I think that's correct.
Alright, uh, the next question was, the building runs excessively large for the size of the lot. You know, as I, you know, like I said, I went around town today. All these buildings, for whatever reason, are pretty much all the same size and do have, you know, five businesses and. And I must say, when I went to all these businesses, uh, the one in South Carver had maybe like a dozen cars there. And, and the one on Marion Way and Commerce Way, there was only like two or three cars at the buildings, it was very quiet. There was no traffic going in and out. So it seems like maybe these things would be just accessed in the morning. Uh, and then maybe in the evening, coming back. And then maybe in the evening, coming back from, from work.
If we attract the tradespeople, um, that we expect to, um, you're a hundred percent correct with that.
And just, just if you look at the table, the dimensional regulations table, uh, the building, the building coverage is at five point seven percent. The, the district allows twenty-five percent. So we're not even close to that threshold.
Okay.
Right.
It's over three acre lot. Three acre lot.
All right, um, next question says, I'd like to see a lot more screening between the building and, and, uh, Ricketts Pond, preferably by the evergreen trees and, and bushes. But even by suitable fencing. I know that, that, uh, Jen and I, uh, went out and we looked between the, the parking area was marked out and the building area was marked out. And like I said, we both looked, and we couldn't see any housing at all from, from that area. So, and we did ask for, and I see that you've provided with some, uh, some more landscaping, uh, at the right front corner, um, off the, off the parking lot and, and I don't know if you, uh, so, so, then, then that's up to the sixty-five foot. No, that, that was up to the hundred foot wetland buffer. And then it stopped. So, um, you know, I was kind of concerned with that, but then seeing that I couldn't see any houses anyway, I don't know how critical that is.
That was the question that, that came up anyway.
We agree, and I think, um, Jim and Eric had a discussion today and Eric provided a, I think a measurement from the limit of work on the Form A lot to the property line, I think, the, the Pollock property line?
Yes.
Eric, you can speak to this?
Yes, um, so that's this measurement right here. This is the closest spot, um, to, to that property, uh, thirty-two dash four dash A two. It's two hundred and two feet from this corner of our lim, limit of work, uh, to, to this property, not even to the structure. And a, as was said before, beyond our limit of work, we'll be maintaining all of those existing trees. Um, so we, we were at this back corner right here and we were looking over to, to that property, to the abutter and like Jim said, we couldn't see, um, couldn't even see your structure from there, so.
Okay, so as far as this Form A lot, it's really not right now anyway. It's, it, and this is in the wintertime when there are no leaves out.
Yes.
Uh, we, you know, we, we couldn't see anything, you know? Granted, there are some trees gonna come down where you're going to grade off the right side of the building, but, but still, yeah, I kind of, I kind of just kind of scaled this off the internet. It was like two hundred and sixty feet from the building to the property line. It was about at least another hundred feet or more to the house.
Yeah, I mean, this building, this building is just about at the front yard setback and the, and the setback to Road A. It couldn't be further away from that residential property than it is. It's in the front left corner of this property. There's all of the area. The, the green line is the sixty-five foot no impervious buffer to the wetland. So if, if we wanted to design a larger building and develop more of a site, we could do it in the location that it is with parking over directly adjacent to the, the residential property, the Pollock property. Because, I mean, there's a substantial amount of upland area there that can be developed. And, um, and it's looking at the contours. It's relatively flat over there. So, um, was it necessary? And this is, this is the extent of the build out that, that works economically, so.
Is there a buffer between the residential property and the commercial property? Is that a fifty-foot buffer or? You know, I didn't have the, uh, the Form A, the subdivision plan, so.
This, I believe this is all in the Spring Street Innovative District, so there's no, there's no district line along the property line? So something, you know, often, oftentimes zoning bylaws, if a residential zone abouts a commercial is a more substantial buffer as a transition.
Right.
Buffer, but that's not the case here.
So there is no buffer area or there is a buffer area?
Well, there's a, there's a building setback and then I think your, your bylaw has, has the parking lot buffer that we, that Eric discussed a few minutes ago that, um, is dependent on number of parking spaces.
Well, there are buffers. I've, I've looked through, and I'm not quite sure what the Spring Street Innovative District is, but the most the buffer would be, would be fifty feet or a hundred feet. But where, but this building is is much further away from the property line anyway.
Well, the building is probably two hundred and fifty feet from the property line.
Right, so in, in this case, I know in, in some of the buffer, they talk about planting trees and stuff like this, but I know in, in some of the subdivisions and things that I've seen done in town, we've had maybe like a fifty-foot buffer, but that was just, if, if it was already treed, we didn't add any more trees. We just, it was a fifty-foot no cut line. I don't, I don't know if any of the other, uh, board members have anything more to add to that, but, uh, generally, if there's a natural buffer there, then that's what we, that's what we leave. We don't cut things down to, to have more things. All right, if, uh, I'll just go on, there's a, um, there was a so I had questions from Dorothy Pollett on one fifty-eight High Street in Carver. And some of these were, uh, to switch the drainage basin and, 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 and that, that's already been discussed. We can't do that because the plan for the subdivision has already been approved. They, uh, want to install a small building and turn it around a hundred and eighty degrees. But I see that most of the buildings are that size anyway. And it turn it at a hundred and eighty degrees, you're actually going to be seeing the side of the building from the street. And actually from the, from the pitches of the buildings, the, the front of the building is much more attractive than the side of the building.
Wouldn't she also be seeing more building if you could see through the woods?
That's, that's the other thing. If, if there is a way to see the building, you would be seeing more buildings from, from her property, I would, I would think.
She'd be looking at the loading base with that configuration.
Yeah.
So.
It, it, it wouldn't be possible, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you rotated that building and held that size, it wouldn't fit. You wouldn't be able to drive all the way around the building between the easement, the drainage easement. I don't, I don't see how that would work.
Well, the lot just isn't made for that. I think they were thinking that you could put a building there with just maybe three bays in it or something, but probably wouldn't be economically feasible to do something like that.
Big impact on grading as well. Um, we show the bays five feet below, uh, the front of the building.
So like three, yeah.
She, she had a lot of
Yeah, true.
A lot of questions about buffering and unfortunately for this lot, I just don't see that buffering is an issue. And I would just want to say that as, as we go through, as this park is developed, all these plans for the, the remaining lots are all going to come before the planning board. And, uh, we'll have to take a look at what the neighbors can see and if there's any buffering needed. But on this particular one, and like I said, I even, you know, Jen was out there with me. You know, I thought that, you know, we, we just couldn't see anything. And this was in January where you, you have the maximum drop, you know, you can see the most, uh, through the woods, uh, and, you know, we couldn't see anything. So, I know that, uh, she's complained about, uh, seeing the excavation work, but it would be further up on the, uh, subdivision road and, and not this particular lot. So I just thought I'd put, put those questions out there and.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Will.
Thanks. Um, just for the public's, uh, information, um, when the BDC Business Development Committee had looked at this and brought to town meeting to do this, um, Innovation Park, uh, we envisioned this through multiple meetings to the public prior to bringing it to town meeting. And when Innovation Park was, uh, adopted by town meeting, this is what we envisioned. The applicant, Peter, and also Mr. Adriano, and I'm talking up on the, uh, Plymouth Street, up on Commerce Way and Marion Way. If anybody has gone up there and seen the type of buildings that is proposed here is, is up there. And how the parks are laid out, Peter has, and his brother have done Marion Way, that aesthetically, when you go into that site, they're always very well maintained, very well groomed up. They're very pleasing to the, uh, to the neighbors and stuff. And, and that's exactly what we envisioned at this Innovation Park. That type of clientele going into that area. And, um, you know, we're talking contractor bays. So, uh, the gentleman who was speaking previously is correct. There are the smaller electricians, plumbers, that type of, uh, people that are going to be in there. It's not going to be somebody with some very large, vehicles going in and out of there. There'll be vans and trucks of that size, you know? So just, just so that way people are aware, when we did this, uh, proposal for, to, uh, redevelop this area, this is what we envisioned. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Will. You know, I did go down Marion Way and Commerce Way and, um, and I went down, you know, down Plymouth Street and there were a lot of houses along that road and there were houses that are right across the street from, from those parks. And, um, and I, I think for a, a, a commercial, uh, park, I think that these are done very nicely. I think the landscaping's nice. I think the buildings are nice. I just don't see that this is going to be a detriment to the, to the neighborhood. It's, it's not going to look like a residential house, but yet it's, it's, uh, it's a building park and if it's landscaped nicely and, uh, maintained nicely and, and I see that the building, the pitches of the buildings that you have do have like a brick facade and, and so they, they're just not a bare metal building. Uh, they're, they're kind of dressed up. So, um, and, and thank you for, uh, sending us and putting that on, on your plans, the pitches of the buildings. Because I know that was one thing that Jen and I were concerned about, uh, what, you know, what the buildings would, would look like. And, you know, and then you can see that there's landscaping in front of the buildings too. I think that addressed all our concerns. I don't know, uh, has any messages come in from the public or has the public been able to participate by, is there anything on screen that tells them that they can type in questions or anything?
Not yet. I was going to suggest that we just put it out there that if anyone would like to make comments, we're receiving them via email at planning at carverma.gov. So just, I haven't, I haven't seen any other comments come in.
Okay. Is there any, uh, any other questions by any of the planning board members? All right.
Because we, well, we brought up, we brought up the driving around it and how a box truck would be the only thing that fit and that triggered my memory. The February twenty-fifth memo from Assistant Deputy Chief Boyle from the Fire Department asks that we confirm that the turning movements into and around the project adhere to local standards and that the radius of the driveway shall be rounded to provide a radius of not less than forty feet. Is that provided for? Because I have a feeling fire engines might be larger than box trucks. So the Fire Department is looking for a radius of not less than forty feet in the driveway.
There's, there's no question it can get around the building. The, the, the lot in the back is forty, how deep is the lot? Forty-three feet, Eric? Forty-five?
Forty-three feet, yeah.
Forty-three feet. So, um, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
Jim, has the Fire Department been, uh, had a chance to, to review this final plan?
They have. Uh, Jen was sending the, uh, February twenty-fifth letter from, uh, the Fire Department.
So they're okay with it? I know that they, they like to be able to access at least three sides. And it does look like, I mean, if they came in the driveway and turned left and then went up the left side of the building and they could easily access the, to the back. So that's three sides there and they may even be able to access the right side of the building too.
They should be able to get around the large area back there. That radius shouldn't be an issue.
I just want to confirm that it is because should be and is in the time of an emergency. You don't want to go back on should be. So the, I just want confirmation that the radius is at least forty feet for their sake. And then I'm looking, number four on that February memo said, "A minimum thirty-foot fire protection buffer shall be maintained between structures and wood line for fire protection." I just want to make sure those two things are satisfied. So I don't know if we have to get, Assistant Deputy Boyle to send an updated memo confirming that or if we can confirm it tonight, but I, I just don't want to, well, it, it should work. I want, I want them to know that it's going to work. The Fire Department, that is.
Well, we could, uh, we, we could add that as a, you know, contingent to the inspection of the Fire Department to make sure that it works, uh.
Okay.
That's fine.
Any of the, anybody else have any other questions or comments? All right, uh.
You've got any, Jim, you got anything else from the public? Have you seen any emails or any?
Uh, nothing as of this time.
Maybe, uh, maybe we could go over the list of conditions and, you know, see if anything as we go over the list of the conditions, see if there's any questions or comments from the public, if we could go over the the conditions and then we could close the public hearing if we don't hear anything more.
Got it.
All right, I'll do, um, I'll start with the waivers. So, uh, taking a waiver from thirty-one, thirty-one G of the zoning bylaws. The waiver was requested from the requirement to show the locations of all ten-inch caliper trees or larger on site. Fosse O'Neill says that due to the size of the site, the existing tree line is adequate and recommends approval of this waiver. Then the next, uh, waiver requested section thirty-two, forty-two of the zoning bylaws. A waiver requested from the sixteen-foot wide perimeter landscaping buffer. Width of the perimeter landscaping buffer is reduced to three point one, three point one feet. The width of the perimeter landscaping buffer is reduced to 3.1, 3.1 feet to the front property line for a total of 6.5 feet between the Cape Cod berm and the edge of the sidewalk in front of the proposed building. It ranges from nine to 19 feet on the western property line adjacent to Road A. And the landscape buffer is in excess of the required 16 feet to the eastern property line. The nearest residential property with potential visibility of the site is approximately 450 feet to the southeast, and there is substantial natural vegetation in this area to provide adequate screening. At a March 5th, 2020 planning board site walk, planning board members asked questions about the landscaping. The applicant's representative stated that the applicant was preparing a landscape plan that was to be reviewed by the planning board. The planning board chairman said at the site walk that because the site is a gateway to the town, that a robust landscaping plan should be presented to the board. It is recommended that the waiver be granted as long as the quality and quantity of the proposed landscaping is acceptable to the planning board. The next requested waiver is to section 3341 subsection 3341A. A waiver is requested from the requirement that no required parking shall be located forward of any building front line on the lot. Section 334A, 3341A provides that the planning board may grant no more than eight parking spaces in front of the principal building. The applicant has proposed 11 parking spaces in front of the building. The zoning bylaw only requires nine parking spaces. So in this case, they require nine parking spaces for the site, but they're proposing extra parking spaces in front of the building. Due to the site location, topography, use, loading zone, and parking configuration, Fussin' O'Neill recommends approval of the waiver. And section 3345, the applicant is requesting a waiver for relief from the requirement to provide bicycle parking. Given the location and proposed use, Fussin' O'Neill recommends that the waiver be committed. Right now, I'll go down, I'll read through the conditions. So condition one, prior to issuance of a building permit, A, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the planning board, planning and permitting office. Two, the project must be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification to this decision. Addition three, applicant shall adhere to the Carver Conservation Commission Order of Conditions and Special Conditions, Mass DEP SE number 126-596 dated March 4th, 2020. Condition number four, prior to the construction of any stormwater management system, infiltration basins, drain holes, et cetera, the applicant shall provide observation data to the planning director for review. Condition number five, prior to construction, the applicant shall submit a final site stormwater pollution to the planning. Item number six, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site during construction. Cementation soil erosion controls shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as controls required during construction. Dirt or debris. Condition number seven, the applicant and each of the future tenants of those contractor trade-in spaces must conform to section 230, Use Regulation Schedule of the Carver Zoning Bylaws, as well as other provisions of the zoning and general bylaws and requirements of the Carver Fire Department. Condition number eight, applicant shall adhere to the conditions outlined in the Carver Fire Department Comment Letter dated February 25th, 2020. Condition number nine, prior to the issuance of a certificate of, of use and occupancy, A, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid. B, his bill plan shall be submitted to the town engineer and permit in electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection. And C, in addition with section 3180, compliance of the Carver Zoning Bylaws, the town's engineers shall inspect the project to ensure that it's been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its conditions. And that's it on the conditions.
And how about condition for the, get a look for the approval of the Fire Department?
So that, that's condition number eight. The applicant shall adhere to the conditions outlined in the Carver Fire Department Comment Letter dated February 25th, 2020.
You know, there was a concern about trash and, and, and stuff coming out of, out of the dumpster. Would it be possible to put a stockade fence around the dumpster? Just hooks and, and so that trash won't fly out? Can we, can we make that a condition?
Yep. Stockade fence is fine.
Okay.
Bruce, through you. The only, the only thing that I want to have changed on this is condition number five, which says, "Planning Director, Strike Director, and Put Board."
That's condition number five.
Yep. I want Strike Director and Put Planning Board.
Don't strike me too hard.
I wouldn't hit you that high, Ben. I'm leaving.
Right at that one. And then.
How are we going to address the need for landscape revisions?
They have to, they have to construct as, as the approved site plan. So any revisions, they'd have to come back to the board for you, Jen.
Because if, earlier I said, you know, that I think it could be improved and the gentleman said that he would be open to redoing that, but I don't, if we don't have it in a plan that we're approving tonight and it's not somehow in the conditions, then it's like the, the revisions don't exist.
How about if it's revised and if they can get it to us at our next meeting? I mean, that'll just be a condition that we can approve the conditions tonight with our approval of the abovites or evergreens to be planted in the front and, and this plan revised and brought to us at our next meeting?
Yeah, something like that. It's, it's just got to be documented in here somehow.
That's fine. We'll agree to that.
Okay. So just basically, the condition says, the applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan to the board at the, I forgot what date we're coming up to, to the May planning board meeting. I'll just be general with that.
Yes, our next meeting will be May 12th. If everything goes all right. If, if the world goes okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we're done with all the conditions, I'd like to close the public hearing if there's no other comments from the public.
Hey, Will, I had a question on the conditions. Do you want to change number four as well to the planning board, not planning director?
Yeah. Thank you, Jim.
Four and five?
Yep.
Don't have one here?
If we're making more edits to the decision, I have a couple more clerical corrections. Is this the right time to do that, Mr. Chair?
Unless you want to just send them to me offline?
Okay, yeah. There's an extra S on building and Fussin' O'Neill is spelled in different ways throughout the document.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, the next planning board meeting was, do we say the 14th?
Okay. Have, have any more, any other questions come in from the public?
May 12th, Jim.
No? Okay. What's that?
That being said, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Will has made a motion to close the public hearing and Jim has seconded the, that. So any further discussion? Hearing none. Let me give a roll call. Wilson, clear.
Aye.
Jim Hoffman?
Aye.
Jen Bogart?
No.
And Bruce Mackey?
Aye.
And Kevin Robinson is, is not here at the time. So do we need four votes or do we need?
It's not, it's not a special permit.
Okay, right. It's a.
Majority.
Oh, that's, that's right. It's just a four vote, yeah. Okay.
Can I get clarification? Is the next meeting the 12th or the 14th of May?
It'd be the 12th is a Tuesday.
Okay, great. Thank you, Will.
It's the 14th. I'll be, I'll still be in Florida, I hope.
All right. So so you're all set. If we could have a revised.
Want to make a motion to approve or not to approve?
Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh, that was just for the. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we need that. Sorry. I'm getting lost in.
No problem.
Video.
I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the application for Spring Street Innovation District for RPBP LLC as presented, presented to us with the conditions that were presented.
I'll second that.
And the revisions that we made too.
Yep.
So we have a motion by Wilson, clear. We have a second by Jim Hoffman for the discussion. Hearing none. Will?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jen?
I'm going to abstain. I'm not ready to vote since I don't think the public hearing should be done yet.
Kevin's not here. Bruce Mackey, aye. So we had three, four, one abstention and one absent.
Who abstained? Who abstained?
Me.
Okay.
Ben.
And Jen. So, okay. So that's it. So if we could have just an updated landscape plan with whatever evergreens or shrubs we could put in the front and we could approve that at next meeting, and I guess it'd be all set then.
Okay. Could I just chime in on another clerical error if it's not too late?
Sure.
RPBP, the name of the entity, it's Ricketts Pond Business Park LLC. So I think some of the letters are mixed up on that. I just want to make sure we have the right name on the plan.
No, we'll go through and make those corrections.
So just to clarify, is it R, B as in boy, P as in Peter, B as in boy?
It's RPBP, Ricketts Pond Business Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I guess we're all set with this tonight. I thank everyone for, for being here with us. And I, I thank the people that, that brought their questions, sent me their questions. And I, I hope we address those as, as best we could. So we'll see you at the next meeting with a, a change in the landscape, scape plan and, and I hope everything goes well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Stay healthy, everybody.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
All right. So we have one more public hearing tonight scheduled. We get.
You're going to get his attention, Will, or am I?
What was that, Jim?
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Sinclair is a butter to this and he's going to be abstaining from the process.
All right.
And then the other issue we have is that now we're down to, well, we got three, three members with Mr. Hoffman, I mean, Mr. Robinson not present tonight. So I don't think we can hold the public hearing for this because we would need four remaining members present to hear the testimony.
Okay.
And then it would also, and it would also require a unanimous vote of the four room members.
Yeah. All right. So then we'll have to, to move this off to May 12th, I guess, huh?
Unfortunately, we, we would have to do that.
Do we have someone here representing this tonight?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Rob D'Ambroso, representing the applicant. Eric Pontiff, who's under contract to purchase the property. I've also, might have lost him, but I thought we had a representative from Nutrien Ag Solutions who's going to operate the, to be constructed facility. But before I go any further, I guess the question is, should I? It sounds like we're tabling this for tonight. So I, I guess you tell me how you'd like to proceed. Should we even open this matter? Open it and continue it? I'll defer to the, the chair and the board.
I think we, probably we should just table this so that the next time we'll try to get all our members together with us and we'll, and we'll do it so that they can all hear. I mean, if we open it up tonight, then some of the members aren't going to, aren't going to hear what, what's going to happen. So if it's all right with you, I, I know that you had the schedule for tonight. I don't know if two weeks is going to hurt, hurt the process or.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we've been here for two hours. So, you know, obviously not our preference, but I don't think we have a choice here, do we?
Uh, no. What, what do you think, Jim?
Yeah, probably just, we'll just make sure we have all members at the, available for the next, next ones, the, the members that would be able to participate. Now. Unfortunately, we had.
Yeah, I think that's.
Kevin somewhere along the line. So I think that unfortunately, that's what we would have to do.
All right. So we're going to have to, yeah, so we'll have to, so we didn't even open this up. So we're not even going to continue this. Then we'll just table it and we'll, we'll just schedule this hearing for May 12th then.
Okay.
That sound good, Jim?
Yep.
I think that's what we're going to have to do. I'm sorry about this, but unfortunately with Will being in a butter and then one of our members not being able to get hooked up online tonight, we have this unforeseen, well, I guess Will wasn't unforeseen, but, you know, Kevin certainly was. So I'm sorry for this.
And, and, Mr. Chair, if I may, I mean, the, the fact that Mr. Sinclair's in the butter, I, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think it disqualifies him. If he's not comfortable, that's, that's one item, but I don't think the simple fact of being in a butter disqualifies a board member from sitting.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll speak, speak up for that. As being a director butter to the project, I will not sit and have any voice or impact on the project whatsoever. And I do apologize to the applicant. It's just that that's the way I've always maintained for the 15, 18 years that I've participated. So but I, I keep that arms distance.
All right. So I guess, you know, that's, that's up to, to Will to make that decision. So we'll have to table this and we'll, and we'll reschedule it for May 12th.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, do you anticipate that being another Zoom meeting or do you, is there any chance Town Hall will be open?
I just heard that the governor. I just heard that the governor is extending, I guess it was supposed to be May 4th when they were thinking about opening up a bit, but now he's extended that today for another two weeks, so I would imagine that this would be another Zoom meeting.
Yep. Okay.
So, in the meantime, we're gonna have to, you know, we'll prepare, we'll, we have to make sure that, that Kevin is gonna be able to participate here and make sure that we have all our, our members with us. So, we're sorry about this, but that's the way it's, it's gonna have to be, I guess, this evening. So, thank you for, for, for being with us tonight, sorry to disappoint. So, we'll, we'll schedule this public meeting to be held at, on May 12th at seven o'clock.
Yeah, we, we would appreciate being the first ones called, thanks very much.
Sure, we, we'll, we'll put you at the top of the list, I understand. Alright, have a good night. Alright, next. We have do we have any, anything else to discuss before we go on to other business, Jim?
That is it. Finished the two public hearings. For the, yep, next up would be the other business.
Alright, planning board member notes. And I don't know if Jen, if you have anything, oh. We, we do have, I guess we can do that under planning director notes, we have the thing about Firefly Airport and the solar system that's going back, I, I guess we could give everybody an update under director notes, but planning board member notes, is any, any board member having wanna speak this evening about anything?
I just want to announce.
I have heard a concern with the Firefly project too, so I'm glad it's being brought up.
Well, I was just gonna go to the planning board member notes and I and I know that I got a memo from, from Jen that, or, and saying that she didn't really want to do these meetings, Zoom meetings, and I kinda wanna wait, wait till we could get back to town, town meeting.
Oh, I didn't say the whole meeting, I said the public hearings, because.
Right, right, I mean.
In my opinion, having a member of the public having to write a formal email while trying to watch a feed on TV is not I didn't know I would have to speak on this tonight, but I guess it's not adequate enough to carry on a back and forth, I know we were speaking about you know, Ms. Pollitt and the other abutter during that a lot, but, but they weren't given the chance to respond in real time. And in my opinion, that's that's kind of concerning, so.
The, the reason I brought this up, and I, I understand your concern, I, I think it's, you know, it's new and it's a little more difficult to do it this way, but unfortunately, you know, I, I spoke with Jim Walsh and so we kinda kicked it around and thing is, is that we'd have so many projects building up here that, and I don't know, now the governor has extended, we, they were gonna open up the 4th of next month, now they're gonna go, they're gonna extend it another two weeks. So, who knows, by the time we get to that time, they may extend it even further. So, I, the only concern I have and what I'd like to see and, and, and I, and Jim talked about, you know, maybe he could do this, was I'd like to be able to to put plans on the, on the, on our site so that people that don't, can't get, we can't get to Town Hall now. So, they, if they call Jim or they call me, I could say, hey, go to the Town of Carver Site Planning Board and, and all our plans for that meeting will be there. I think if we put out in the abutters notice that, that it will, if, if this isn't done at Town Hall, because Town Hall is still closed, if they, you could give them the, the, the address that they can get into on their computer so that they can type in questions, that would be helpful too, instead of just seeing it flash on TV, if they actually had it on their, on their notice that the, the meeting was gonna occur. So, that way there, people could view the plans online and they could participate online, and I think that's, you know, the best that we can do right now. Until this virus thing clears up and, and we can go back and have our meetings at Town Hall.
Yeah, well, at our last meeting, I remember Will brought up that, that meeting you had with 300 electricians all over the country and there was the chat feature and, and someone else said there was the raise hand feature on Zoom, so even if we can't meet together in room one, in my opinion, we've gotta do more to be able to let the public participate live time with us like the applicants are, we, we've gotta invite them to the meeting and not just have them sit on the other side, because now we gotta be like, well, what if they're having email problems, we can't end this, because what if we're gonna be getting an email?
I don't know, I, I don't know if there's any other ways to do this, Jim, have, have you heard anything or experienced anything that would make?
What I heard was when you open up the Zoom meeting to anybody and you don't know who they are, they can come in and lack of a better word, cause mischief, post materials that are inappropriate, or they just interfere, like, just as we're going through the conditions, there was someone on there making a lot of racket in the background. So, there are some issues, I don't know, Sue, I believe you had a little bit more experience with this than I have.
I mean, it, it can be tricky, I mean, there was a gentleman on this meeting, Mr., I, I don't know how to pronounce his name, Utley. He was making the noise in the background, he never talked, so.
Right, he was with the last public hearing.
He was, okay. But it's hard when you can't tell who's on, I mean, they can just come on and just have a number, or they turn their video feed off so you can't see who they are. I don't know, it's, it's more of a big deal with the schools because of who's on the Zoom meetings at the schools, but it can be quite concerning.
Is there a way that we could send something out to the abutters and have them register so they can get an email, a link sent to them?
You absolutely can, you can send just a link and you can require a password. So, that only those people that have, now, the problem would be if they shared it. But, you know, if it's expressed that it's just for you, this is your password, this is how you get on, you make sure that there's a waiting room so that the person that's hosting the, the meeting has to let the other person in. And the only way they get into the meeting is if they're let in, so, I mean, there are some safety nets, so.
So, it's almost like you have to pre-register to receive the link. So, to Jen, to your point, so the abutters, we can invite them, and if they accept the invitation, they can then get the link emailed to them.
Yeah.
So, a- almost what the, what the abutter notices come on. This is the, you know, the meeting hopefully won't be too much longer, but like the next meeting will be a Zoom meeting. So, maybe any abutters for that, we can extend that invitation and please reply if you'd like to be part of the meeting.
Maybe we could provide in the notice an email address for them to send to us, to send it to us to ask to participate in the meeting and then we can then send back you know, the password and, and the link.
Yep.
Time include them.
Yep.
So, they'd have to pre-register, so at least they'd have to make a commitment.
Exactly.
Right.
Versus spending several things out there that you don't want, I think.
Right, I think that's probably the way we could go with the, you know, the next meeting.
Or to, if we're gonna do that with the password protection, if we do that with the invites and passwords, maybe at the beginning of our meeting when we know we're on channel 15, Bruce could announce, like, if you would like to join our Zoom meeting live now, email, what is that, planning@carver, the, the email address you're asking people to send questions to, ask them at the beginning of the meeting, if you wanna join us right now, email us at this address and we'll send you a link so you can join our meeting. Just another option, in, in my opinion, the public's gotta have more access to these meetings other than just static emails to be sent while we're talking. Well, on a normal basis, how are they notified that there's a public meeting? Do you, do you reach out to them at the time of the meeting to come down?
They get notified by the green card if they're direct to them.
So, I mean, they're, they're all being notified as an abutter. But like even just the general public too, like I know there's the public hearing notices and we have our agendas too, so. I know, we don't get a lot of public participation, but it's not to say, like, we want people to, but the way it's happening now, it's like we're making it harder for them to, and we want more people to participate. I know this is unprecedented and it's hard, but we gotta figure out how to do more. Yeah.
No, I understand. It's, it's doubly hard because now we're working at half staff. Our staffing was, is completely 50% of what it was before, and so we gotta cram a lot of stuff into two days, so it's, it's difficult, it's gonna be difficult.
But you still think that we should go on, we, we have to do it this way, otherwise we'll just get so backed up with.
Right. People wanna, you know, they have their investments they wanna make and I think we need to keep them moving and then subsequent to that, we have contractors who are gonna be, you know, building pieces of this project, we gotta keep those electricians going, we gotta keep those plumbers going, he's ignoring me. And the other trades so that we can, right, keep the economy juiced as, as much as we can, you know, there's a, you know, I was going out delivering the packets today and there is quite a bit of construction going on out there, so you know, do our best to keep those folks employed and that means that we, we gotta do our part, which is the, kind of the initial permitting process and then everything flows from there.
Alright, so I, yeah, I think it would be good if we send out green cards, especially this one that we were gonna hear tonight and, and we didn't. If those people could be notified by, I don't know, probably the green cards have already been sent out. Because we were gonna hear this tonight.
The green, green cards did go out, we got ours.
Yeah, so, um, I, I don't know if those, I don't know how many people are abutters there, you know, especially the people in back, they, you know, whoever, I don't, I don't know if they, they can be notified. It would be nice even if it was on, on TV, I was looking at the, at Area 58, Channel 15 on the cable this afternoon and I was just waiting to see if there was any information on, on, on contacting the board, you know, for this meeting, but I didn't see anything, so. I guess, well, we gotta work with Area 58 on this too, because they're the ones, and I did wanna thank them for everything that they've done to do this and I can't imagine that it's, it's, it's an easy job trying to put this together, so I thank the people that work at Area 58. So, we'll try to get some information out there anyway, and like Jen said, we'll try to, I thought that there would be a scroll, I can't see it, I don't have a TV in this room, but I, because of all the confusion tonight and I didn't know when the TV was, when we were on TV or, or not, I, I didn't get the website out for the type questions, I guess what I should do is do it two or three times during the meeting and just, if it's a public hearing, I should continually say that so that people can hear it and if they have any questions, at least they can, they can get on their computer and type something in to us. We'll try to do that better.
Break in, but you, you wouldn't let me.
But I did let you talk, oh. You know, you know, you know how, how I go on and on. Alright, anybody else have any planning board member notes, anything else?
I just want to, I just want to announce that the Kane Strong golf outing has been rescheduled due to the coronavirus, it was supposed to be in May 16th and we're now pushing it off to August 15th, Saturday, August 15th, so. Be a little bit warmer in August than it would have been in May.
I guess.
What's the date again, August what?
August.
That her free ticket?
August, August 15th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I tried.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Alright, we'll go to planning director notes.
Did you wanna, people want the update on what, the Firefly?
Yeah, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Alright, so last week, you know, spoke with Cara Dayhill and her husband is, you know, down at Firefly, you know, working there and they, I guess a crew of some sort had been out there. Not sure what they were doing, but they were staging, or they had equipment that they were working with kind of behind the tree line that's behind that first cranberry bog. And so, they're calling and, you know, you know, they starting to work on the solar arrays, so I check with the staff, there's no permits have been pulled for the solar arrays and, and so the question came up, well, when they're gonna cut down the trees? So, what, in the conditions for that project, the first condition, one, it deals with a requirement to prepare a flight plan over the bogs to show where the, where the solar panel is gonna be, it's about 90 feet wide by roughly 800 feet long. So, that would be the plan and that's supposed to be submitted to, you know, the planning office to be shown to the planning board before they get their building permit. And then also part of that condition was a condition to remove the trees. So, at this point, no one has submitted an application to the building department to start the work on that particular project. And so, there's really not much for us to, you know, act on because there's nothing to act on in terms of a permit. Yeah, they may have been working on the lines going back there, the electrical wires, the but that could have been associated with the existing electricity to the pump houses out, out there. I did go out to the site, but when I was out there, there was no activity going on. So, you know, Jim Dayhill's concern is coming in and coming out, you know, they're going, I guess the day that Jim Dayhill observed a crew out there, they were kinda on the other side of the trees, kind of underneath the flight path, and so that concerned him. So, next week, I'll have to see if, you know, just kinda go out there to see if any work is happening and then if so, then try to find out more about what they're, what they're actually doing out there. So, everything right now is just speculation, could be they're, you know, just staging, you know, for when they do start the work on the site, but I don't know that for a fact, it's just speculation right at the moment.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Jim, is there anything else?
That is it, other than I just wanna let people know that, you know, the permitting department is working on a half-time basis, so all the full-timers now working 50% of their regular hours and then we have one of our part-timers who's working half of her part-time hours. And so, we're trying to, the office is basically open Monday and Tuesday from eight to four and we're just focused on processing all the billing permits that are coming through, inspection requests, dealing with payroll and, you know, payment of bills and then doing plenty board prep. So, so by the time Monday, Tuesday are over, we, we finished our work week. And so, I, I'm just monitoring my emails and phone calls from home. And so I, I'm just monitoring my emails and phone calls from home for the rest of the week. And then, you know, we're all applied for unemployment for the half of the week. And we'll see what the state sends us, you know, wait for those checks to come through. So, so we're low on the slow side to respond, just give us, you know, a little bit of slack, but we're going to try to just kind of keep abreast of things that are going on.
Hey, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Hey, pass on to the staff in the office. We appreciate all the help and all the efforts during this time. I know that talking with them, they're quite overwhelmed. Whoever made the idea of putting them on a part-time basis, my opinion was stupid. But, you know, I just wanted to get that publicly known.
It came at the worst time because we're
Absolutely.
We took a little break from our meeting schedule, and I think the powers that be forgot that we have these boards and commissions that we have. And there's a lot of work that goes into, you know, because we have the planning board, we have Conservation Commission, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals, the North Carver Water District, and the Zoning Board of Appeals that we all handle out of this office. And when we're at regular staffing levels, we're able to, you know, handle that out, you know, decently, you know, we can pretty much get the job done. But now it's just, by the time Tuesday's over, our work week's over, and that we're, there's a lot of things that we're not accomplishing that we, you know, that should be accomplished, but we just don't have the time to do it.
I agree.
So we just need to, you know, maybe we need to have a discussion with, with the new town administrator just to say, hey, look, you know, the, you know, the requests for building permits and for development permits has not subsided. And we, you know, we really need to get people back to full speed. Hey, can't go into a planning board meeting with only half a decision, right?
Now, now, did they cut everybody's time in half all throughout Town Hall, or was it just?
What they started with was for the union employees, they went through and they asked for individuals to voluntarily furlough. And so they came up with a list and went over it back and forth with, you know, the administration and kind of came up with a kind of a first cut list. And then they were kind of asked to go back when a lot of people said, no, they were asked to go back and say, okay, you know, we really need to do this. And then, so they came up with that list. And then, then they decided to look at departments and say, okay, well, are you fully 100% essential? So permitting under the state guidelines, building permits, inspections, et cetera, those are deemed essential services. But it was looked at that, okay, well, part of your job is maybe not essential, so we'll cut you back, but it's at 50% where I would argue probably 90% of the job is essential. And then maybe 10% is, you know, other stuff that wouldn't be deemed essential. Because I could, you know, I could easily fill up the rest of the week doing stuff that needs to be addressed. But you're in a halftime schedule, so where do you, you know, where do you draw the line? So, so that was, so that was the decision was, okay, planning and permitting. All right, we, you know, how do you want to do it? Do you want one person to work in the office and then the other two are furloughed? Or do you want to have all three of you furloughed at 50%? And so it was determined that we would furlough at 50%. Because each person has a different set of work that they deal with. And so essentially, like, Michelle, who was a half-timer, she's the one who handles all the building permits and coordinates with Bob Francis. And, and so when she kind of left, then you had all her work. And then every Monday, there's anywhere from, you know, 30, 40, 50 phone calls that need to be answered. And so Jen Muller, she, she was another part-timer, and that was kind of what she did. She handled the mail and then also, and the mail includes everything that's either US Mail or things that are dropped into the drop box outside. And so she handled the sorting of all that stuff, all the mail items, and making sure they got to the right person. And then she also went through all the voicemails of all the calls that, you know, came in from the previous week and kind of had to, you know, go through and triage those phone calls to figure, okay, what had to be taken care of immediately? And then she'd be the one who, you know, kind of handled all those calls and responded to all the callers. So we lost her. So now you have a smaller staff doing more work. And, you know, it's not that we're doing less building permits, we're still doing the same amount of building permits, it's just that we can't get through them, through them all in the way that we want to be getting through them all.
All right, Jim. Well, hopefully we can, something can be done as time goes on. But thank you for that update. So we have the minutes of April 14th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Well, there were a couple, like, technical things, like now that it was brought up, the R B P B should actually R P B P, and then Fasen O'Neil is spelled wrong a few times. So I can email that stuff in.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Will, a second by Jim. Those in favor, do a roll call vote. Will?
Aye.
Jim Hoffman?
Aye.
Jim Bogart?
Aye.
Who's Mackie? Aye. And Kevin is absent tonight. All right, so next meeting will be May 12th. I don't know what we're going to have on the agenda. I know that we do have this, this new project that we couldn't hear tonight. Is there anything else that you know about, Jim?
So we have that, so we'll have Eric, well, Eric Pontus group, and then the, I think it was Outback Engineering, that site, that A and R plan.
Okay.
18 South Main Street. So we'll have that one back, and hopefully we'll have the information so that the board can take a vote on that to endorse it. And then we'll have Spring Street back with the landscape plan.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, and then Eric Pontus, Forest Street plan. And hopefully that will be it. So we just keep it simple, easy, and gives us enough time to maybe do the extra notification to the abutters.
I will be out of town.
You'll be out of town for that?
I hope.
For the May 12th?
Yep, I'll be in Florida, I hope, if they don't cancel that flight.
Yeah, they're going to let you go to Florida?
They keep canceling flights.
Okay.
Just bring a mask.
Oh, I wear them, trust me.
Yeah.
Hey, Jim, the packet we got for Spring Street, do you want us to give these to you when you deliver on us next packet? Do you want these back?
Sure. Yep, we'll take those back and have them recycled for you.
Okay.
And go through what we plundered, the, the good parts that we need.
We're going to, we're going to hold on to the Forest Street one. Because that's what we're going to be hearing next week.
Right, hold on to Forest.
Okay.
Any updates, I'll, you know, make sure that they get out to y'all.
Okay. Just want to do our recycling best.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I, I know I also spoke to Jim, we were talking, I don't know if things slowed down a bit just because it's, it's difficult and kind of goes with what Jen has to say. If, if, if we could just have one meeting a month, if things get slow, just so we won't have to go through this, but we'll, we'll have to look at this. That's why I asked Jim tonight, you know, what it looked like for our next meeting. So we'll just kind of see. I'd like to do two, but it's, it's kind of difficult sometimes doing it this way. But we'll continue on and we'll just go from meeting to meeting and we'll see what happens. Hopefully this, this, we'll get, we'll get back together again at Town Hall after a few months.
I think the next target date, what, May 18th, what the governor said today?
Yeah, I said, yeah, it was supposed to be the 4th, and he's, well, I thought he said the 4th, and that's two more weeks, so that's 14 days, so it'd be the 28th of next month, I think, or something like that.
I think, I think the original, yeah, it's, it's the 18th what he announced today. I think it was originally April 29th with the return to school, May 4th, because the 29th is a Friday or whatever it is. But I think what he announced today was May 18th.
Well, Mr. Chair, I got another question for you before Will makes.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
We have signatures for our plan endorsements. Do we want to just try to schedule that on Monday? And do we want all members to sign, or do you want to, okay, one person to sign?
Well, I thought that we had discussed that, and it was either Jim Hoffman or myself that could sign for everyone, but there were also members that wanted to sign themselves no matter what.
Yeah, that's, you can just say it's Jen.
Well, no, I think Will too. So, I mean, that's up to you. If you want to, if you want to call Jim and, you know, bring your mask with you.
Yep.
And come down. I, I imagine Jim can accommodate you. But have you got the paperwork necessary, Jim, to, that goes to the registry of deeds?
So we have the MyLars in the office, you know, for the plans that need to be signed. And so what we're going to do is use our little mini conference room to get things set up in there. But I like to try to set it up so that maybe, you know, set a specific time. I know Will comes in late so that we can have the plans available for pickup from the applicants, probably the next day. So say Monday, we get them signed, and then Tuesday, the plans are available for pickup by the various applicants so that they can do, pick a MyLars and go do their thing with them. Especially for the Newars.
Yeah, I guess what I can ask then is, is everybody available to go down to Town Hall if Jim calls you to come down and sign the plan?
Yeah, I have my own, I have a key to, key to the building, so I can get in at any time, so.
Wow.
I don't have a key, but I'll find a way there.
So, Mr. Hoffman, would you be available to sign?
I'm available, yeah. For Monday, I'll be available, sure.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I don't know what Kevin's doing. Do you need, you need Kevin's signature also?
For the A and R plans voted tonight, so he wouldn't be signing those because he wasn't present.
Oh, so he doesn't, okay, he doesn't have to do that, okay.
And then for
So, yeah, if you, just give me a time, when to come down. I'm not, I'm not too busy, so I could probably come down.
I'm not supposed to say that. Do you want to say 10 o'clock on Monday, and then that way we can have everything all set up and organized for you?
Is that all right with everybody else?
Yeah, I'll be in after 5:00.
Yeah, so we'll have everything there for Will. And then, so Jen, I guess, we just need to, maybe just set up a time to make sure that people are there so that you can get into, into the building.
Sure, yeah.
I haven't heard the key yet either, so.
I'll give you mine when I'm done with it.
The early answer, can you be a health agent? You can help out.
Hey, Jim, I just want to say thank you for all your help on this. I know you've been driving around delivering plans and stuff, so it's greatly appreciated. It doesn't go unnoticed.
I get great tips. What stocks not to buy, what kind of mask, where to buy masks.
We appreciate it, Jim.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn on the table.
I will second that.
And Mr. Hoffman has seconded that, so those in favor, Will?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jen? Jen?
My husband was messing around with the Bluetooth, so he like stole the speaker from the computer to the kitchen.
All right, Bruce, aye. So, good night, everyone, and
Good night, everybody.
All right, be safe.
And y'all.